The Commissioner's office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes of the meetings of May eighth, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Mr. Speedy?
Aye.
Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Number two, Commissioner's office is requesting Board approve, execute the minutes for the meeting of May thirteenth of two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Speedy?
Aye.
Mr. Rear?
Aye. Motion approved. Number three is the financials. Heidi, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Financials today include a revenue certification for the Snart Ohio grant funding for the county. An appropriation transfer for the reallocation of the remaining two thousand fourteen funding for the youth center operations from the mental health ward to the Ravenwood Mental Health Agency. Supplemental appropriation request to appropriate funding for the purpose of paying down the debt on the Parkland wastewater treatment plant for the Department of Water Resources. Purchase order for Tomlin Toledo for the purchase of a root mower for the Parkland of Water Resources and tolling this was in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred fifty dollars. Payment to IterSource Corporation for the contracted services for G.I.S migration to new VPN technology in the amount of twenty-three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. Payment to Cleveland Letter for a profile mailing for Pro Bay Court in the amount of twenty-three thousand four hundred sixty dollars and eighty-nine cents.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speedy?
Aye.
Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you, Heidi. Okay, number four is going to be Anita, how are you?
Good morning.
Check to see if you got jumbled to number five.
This is for Petty Group, landscaping, they're out on three oh six and Russell. One of their few businesses out there actually. Well known to the county, Steve Petty is a really good guy. They've continued to increase their employment, increase their sales, they do, well, you know, Mary, high end.
Yeah, they do, really nice.
And they're always doing the botanical garden and continue to win awards for their design. But anyhow, they need to renovate, upgrade, pay the parking lot, fix the road, fix the floors, buy some additional equipment, and they've requested a hundred thousand through the county loan fund, so they always pay their debts and they always create their jobs.
On time at all.
We're thrilled with them. Anything we can do to help them continue to expand. So, five years at three percent, a hundred thousand.
Yeah, they're good.
Aren't they first-rate people?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Very proud of them.
Okay, if we could read number four then.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the Board approve and execute a letter of commitment to Petty Group Incorporated for a local revolving loan fund loan to purchase machinery and equipment and building improvements for the facility located at one five five three three Chillicothe Road, novelty, in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars for five years, sixteen months, at three percent interest.
I'll make that motion. Some assembly required here.
Threw us a curve ball. Christie.
Me?
Yeah, he put us on different lines.
I have a project in about an hour.
Okay.
I second. I second.
All right. Motion stands approved, thanks for that.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, number five is going to be the County Home, approving, requesting the Board rescind the motion from May eighth, two thousand fourteen, that read approve hiring Anna Jevens to the position of summer help at a rate of eight twenty-five per hour to be effective May thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, through September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, for twenty-one weeks maximum, eight hundred and forty hours.
Karen's not here, apparently she's not taking the position.
Okay. All right, if we have a motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Speedy?
Aye.
Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Next one, Peggy, I think is one of those.
Oh, that's, oh, she's, oh, she's leaving. So they gotta rebid that then.
This is a different one. She's a part-time attendant.
Okay. So then on number six, we're gonna have the County Home is requesting the Board accept the resignation of Petty Sapinski, part-time attendant, to be effective May twentieth, two thousand fourteen.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Speedy? Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Then on number seven, we've got the County Home is requesting the Board increase the current posting for part-time attendant, number one five zero four dash one, from one position to three positions. These positions will remain posted until filled.
All right, so moved.
Second.
Mr. Speedy?
Aye.
Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Is that something that those, is this summer, summer help, some of those interns can do?
Yeah, possibly, yes. So we'll have the posting open, but if we can fill it one little sooner.
I see.
She was hoping to have one of her summer help fill one of the vacant seats and then that didn't come out, so now she.
And then she had a resignation.
She already had had another opening and then she has internal, so she's.
Someone from Pro Bay, how you doing?
I'm okay.
Good.
Taking care of this as quickly as you can. Good morning. We are here to once again sign our application for our fiscal year two thousand fifteen Reclaim Ohio, Ohio Department of New Services subsidy. We are bringing in a hundred and six thousand dollars more, than a hundred and six thousand more than we did last year. That's because, A, we didn't commit anybody to a DYS institution, and B, it's such a complex formula that this particular year, we weren't in the donut hole, and that with our carryover and good management of funds, we have more money than we had last year. Last year, we had none. So what we have done this year is basically maintain the program substance abuse, but we have added a program that we formally funded, which is residential treatment. What we're going to do with that is contract, excuse me, with the therapeutic youth center here in John Key County for up to five placements and five hundred bed days total, to about a hundred and two thousand dollars during fiscal year, to be able to keep kids in Tioga County and let them come into them here. That's what we've determined to do with that surplus. Because of the way that the formula is and how tentative this is, it's very difficult to institute a brand-new program and start staff, because next year we could be back down to what we were last year was, we didn't do any money. So rather than do that, we'd like to put it to a clause that we believe in, we know what the kids home-based, you know, it's tried and true evidence-based, we think it's according to that. So we're just asking for those signatures so we can forward this and bring our money back to John County.
Okay. All right, if we could read number eight.
The Republican General Court is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Ohio Department of Youth Services subsidy grant, June Court funding application, updating for the period July first, two thousand fourteen, through June thirty, two thousand fifteen, for a base allocation of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars and a variable allocation in a amount of a hundred and six thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars, forty-seven cents for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speedy?
Aye.
Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Motion approved, thank you.
I'd love to.
Okay, Joe, county engineer.
Oh, Vegas, Vegas, uh, slate, huh?
Yeah.
Watch those pitching, you know, you gotta watch that pitching.
Is that what Frank Antonucci did you?
Oh, yeah, you should see him.
You should see the other guy.
Is that why he's hiding in court?
No, it's torn bicep and rotated cuffs.
Ouch.
Surgery Tuesday. Will get better though.
So you wanna go bowling or?
He just wants to.
I'll take you on for money.
Oh, boy, no. Okay. Who done making fun of me?
Was that a number of eight and a half?
Yeah, eight and a half.
They ridiculed the cover.
We have a couple projects on here, asking you guys to, in both cases, sign your resolution to order, sign the cover sheet, and advertise for bids. First project there is Old State Road in Middlefield, and that would be from eighty-eight all the way up to five twenty-eight. It's about four point two miles. This job is a ditching, kind of build the shoulders, there's not very much shoulder against the pavement, so we're gonna move the drive plates back and build some shoulder out there, and then next year we're gonna pave that whole section.
Eighty-eight or five twenty?
From eighty-eight to five twenty-eight, not Old State, our Old State.
Yep, yep. Yeah, it's four point two miles, it's quite a stretch. So if we get this work done this year, it'll be ready to just pave it next year, be pretty
good. Should take about seventy-five days, and there will be a detour set up, but it's, you know, they'll let the local traffic through it. In those areas, we always let the Amish go through, we don't make that go around, so it'll be maintained for that. Our estimate is six hundred and fifteen thousand. It's a long job, a big job, so. That's that one. Do you want me to do both at the same time, or you want?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay, 'cause it's the same process for both of them. The second project we have here is for the, it's an improvement to Culver's on six oh one, which would be Ravenna, our Ravenna Road here, Old State forty-four. And a couple locations, we have a paving project coming out next year for this, and in this case, two drainage improvements ahead of that to accommodate that project. And this is two locations out there, so we have an estimate of a hundred and ten thousand dollars on that, and this also will have a detour. It'll only be about thirty days, we're hoping they can do a little shorter than that, but if we get this out and ordered quick, we'll definitely be done and back open before school, and obviously in that area, that's pretty critical with the same areas there in Charten Middle and High School. So hopefully we'll get that work done before school opens, and everybody will be happy.
All right, if we could read nine and ten.
The County Engineer's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute a resolution of fourteen dash zero eight six to order the drainage improvement of Old State Road, CH six, by Tuesday through eight, in Middlefield and Parkland Township. This resolution also requests the Board approve and execute the cover sheet for the specification we're putting to the same. Further, this resolution sets a bid opening on Thursday, June fifth, two thousand fourteen, at two o'clock P.M. Notice that this bid opening will be advertised on May twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, on the county website. The County Engineer's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute a resolution of fourteen dash zero eight seven to order the improvements at Culver's number six zero one dash zero point two zero and six zero one dash two point two eight on Ravenna Road in Charten Township. This resolution also requests the Board approve and execute the cover sheet for the specification we're putting to the same. Further, this resolution sets a bid opening on Thursday, June fifth, two thousand fourteen, at two oh five P.M. Notice that this bid opening will be advertised on May twenty-second, two thousand fourteen, and on the county website.
All right, I'll make those motions.
Second.
Mr. Speedy? Aye.
Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye, motion is both approved. John Eddie, one one, is that oops, or is that, is that just something?
That's an oops, that's an oops. Yeah, they've changed to a nationwide number, which is great, that really helps out, especially you get someone coming in from out of town and they don't know your numbers.
Yeah, so it's possible.
Yeah, but the only exception to that is there's, small oil and gas producers have their own, and they're trying to network that together, and when that happens, that will be great, 'cause you have all these little mom-and-pop ones that were put in way years ago, and it's tough to track those down, it really is.
And that would be, well, gas and electric and?
The, the small?
They'll, they'll do?
Oops will do, oops will do everything, except some people aren't members, and when I refer to the small, small oil and gas producers, it's, you know, some of these little wells out in the farms and stuff, you know, it could be a company that owns ten wells, well, they're not a member of oops, so that can be difficult, but, but the oops covers everything besides, besides those things.
Okay.
Yeah, so it, it is helpful with that, it really is.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Hope you feel better there.
Oh, yeah, we'll get there.
Number eleven, how are you?
Good, sir.
Good, good.
Morning. Very spiffy. Look at him.
I didn't have time for washing clothes last night.
I like that.
The first one's for grease removal, this is where we have our grease pit down there at the safety center. We get this cleaned out twice a year. We need to do this, it affects the wastewater plant and everything, so we do a contract with them for two years.
All right, if we could read number eleven.
The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Universal Disposal Incorporated to perform grease removal and maintenance from the safety center grease trap, that's the thing, for year two thousand fourteen and year two thousand fifteen, in an amount not to exceed three thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speedy?
Aye.
Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye, motion approved.
Number twelve's for the, we did a contract agreement to clean, for cleaning janitor services of buildings five and six. This is something we had done, the contract was over with, so it's about two thousand dollars more compared to the last two years, which, which is not bad, so.
You wanna do thirteen since the same company?
Yes, this is also with DES, getting that building cleaned down there, so combining this, we were able to somewhat bring them together, but under different contracts and get, you know, you go out with a much higher volume and something cheaper, so we kind of did that with them, and these folks came back with that.
Yep, if we could read twelve and thirteen then.
The Maintenance Department, the Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Cioto Services to perform custodial services at four seventy Center Street, building number five and building number six, for the period from June first, two thousand fourteen, through May thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, in an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-eight cents. The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve, execute a service contract agreement with Cioto Services to perform custodial services at the Department of Emergency Services, for the period from June first, two thousand fourteen, through May thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, in an amount not to exceed seven thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speedy? Aye. Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Both motions will stand approved, and then Glenn, we've got number fourteen.
Correct. Number fourteen, this is the data center, this is the heart, basically, of the workers within the county. This is where all the computers, phone systems and everything, this is the main, like I said, the heart of the county. This room goes down, and it has a very, very good possibility of shutting almost all the county buildings down that fall underneath the, the computers and the phone systems. So right now, we have two five-ton units in there, right, and they've been there for a while. Within the last year, both of those units are running now at the same time because of the AC requirements, all right, so it's pulling anywhere from five to probably about eight or nine tons of AC to keep this room cool. Also remember, this is not your typical, hey, it runs a couple hours a day, you know, it only runs in the summertime. This room runs twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, all right, to keep it cool. So what I'd like to do is, you know, with that lifespan, all right, is go ahead and pre-plan this and get another ten-ton unit in there. This ten-ton unit, what it's gonna do, it's gonna have two five-ton compressors on the inside, so instead of getting two new units, we're actually putting two units into one, all right, so if it's only calling for five tons of AC, it's not gonna bring both of those compressors on, all right, and this is gonna be a backup to the system we have right now. If this unit goes down, it's gonna be more than a couple days if we get another AC unit in place.
Once you get in the middle of summer, there's no margin for error right now.
Correct. There's none. You know, when it was first put in, it was only using one unit, one unit at the time. Now that there's more equipment or whatever, we're using both units now at the same time, so right now we have no backup. And we went out for quotes for this, and we got some different ones, and twenty-four thousand, the next one was thirty-five thousand, all right, and this is gonna be tied into our train system, and what I mean by that is tied into our, our computer system, where we can sit at a desk, like, and we can see the temperatures throughout the building and everything.
Will these both be online at the same time, so that if, well, I mean, if you're not here twenty-four seven and monitoring it, if one of those older units goes down?
We, we have systems in place, we get an alarm, all right, it'll phone us going, hey, your temperature is now at ninety-five or a hundred degrees.
Somebody's gotta get in and manually fire the second unit up.
Right now, the two units are working together.
I'm talking about the new unit in conjunction with the two existing units.
It's something we can look at, so, but as of right now, no.
'Cause I'm thinking, you know, if you need five, you use five, you need ten, you use ten, if it automatically needs fifteen, it kicks the next one on.
We don't have to do that.
And if it goes to twenty, we put ice cream, whatever, you know, it's cold in there.
Right.
Okay.
The only concern, I was talking with Dave about this in detail, is this is all in the basement.
Yes, sir.
You know, the big concern that we have is, is, you know, I understand we need to do this, but what happens in a flood situation?
We'll never have a flood, sir.
He's on top of the hill.
There was a time the sprinkler system broke in January of two thousand eight-nine, I think it was, yeah, and flooded the prosecutor's office and dripped down in the juvenile program.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, and some of it got down there, but, I mean, being on the top of a hill, you'd never see something like that.
Right, right, but, yeah, and I, I got that, but it just, you know, you just, what, you know, what could happen, you know, it's just?
It's not the ideal location for a data center, and I think we should be planning down the road.
It's been a bad place.
Tracy said that.
Plus the, plus the moisture that's in the basement, you know, how much of that air conditioning is running to take out moisture more than cool, you know?
Right.
For a long time.
It's, you know, and it's almost like, and I realize, you know, this, this equipment probably can be re, you know, re, you know, replaced someplace else, but I really think that it's something that, that we really need to really think about and look at, because, you know, the other thing that always comes to my mind is, is something, you know, even it breaks in the street, you know, like your main water lines or something, you know, that you never know what should happen.
Should run back up.
Yeah, you know, and, and then all of a sudden, we've got a real, we've got a real headache, you know, so, I mean, I just.
Now, a lot of those systems are replicated down at the safety center, but I don't think everything's replicated at the safety center.
It's not.
So, I mean, the public safety, the public safety applications would come up and run out of the safety center.
Well, all of those main servers are replicated.
Yeah.
They, every one of them are in duplication, every one of them. That was done many years ago, probably eight years ago.
Okay.
But the problem with the data center is that, you know, we had problems with water coming in earlier on, that was one of the reasons we wanted to move it out of there. That's one of the reasons we went into duplication.
Yeah, so what is the plan?
Well, the plan for the data center really is in the hands of the auditor.
Yeah, he makes that decision.
By law, he's administrator of the automated data processing board, so ultimately, he's the one, but this board has to provide the funding for whatever migration we want to undertake. I just think long-term, probably, is there'll be more need for the courts and the legal system on the square, at some point, we're gonna have to give them more room by moving some people off to square that don't have to be right by the courts, and the data center would be one of those.
I see.
One of those operations. We don't really have any option of, of, physical space right now.
There is no physical space right now, there really isn't.
Physical space right now that, that would be any better than what we have.
Yeah, not, not yet, I mean, the engineer is building, and at some point, this building right next door is gonna be.
Well, that was the whole plan of moving.
Yeah, so, I mean, we're gonna have space over time.
We have.
But it's not like we can't do this now, because we, we can move them next month somewhere else, but that should be the plan, that should be a priority, to get them out of there at some point.
Very, 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 very.
I'd be more than willing to show you the, the space, how, where it's located at right now, and so you can go walk through on that and everything, anytime you want.
Well, we did take, there was a, a department down there, we took all of them out of there.
Well, the auditors, the auditor had staff down.
We took them out of there, and then they, then they just put, you know, just computer systems in there at that time. But, you know, that's very pricey.
Remember, question?
Question? If you don't mind, I'm hoping that each of you has a business case in front of you, and that you're not making this decision on a five-minute conversation. Ralph asked a very good question, a very astute question, which I hope is part of an overall plan, I don't, sitting on this side of the table, we don't see the plan, we don't see the detail behind the decision process, but I'm hoping this decision process is not a five-minute conversation, that there's a business.
Yeah, this, this is, this is just to basically get something, we know that we've got, we've got a concern, this is a temporary fix that we're going to do as far as, just to secure this, this location, God forbid something were to happen as far as cooling, but we know that something that, that's gotta be discussed, and I think that we gotta maybe talk to the auditor too to see of what a, you know, plan is in place, and, and Dave and I have had a, you know, conversation about this for the last couple of weeks, because it is, it's something we gotta address, and it's, it's gotta get done, because we don't wanna end up having a problem, so it's something that we're gonna look into, and it's just, this has kinda brought it a little bit to light, and it's, you know, it's a discussion we need to have with the auditor to figure out what is the plan, and of what can we do to make this, you know, to, to just basically build a little bit more assurance that, to take at least that, that liability out of the equation of, of a possible water issue.
And to hear you say that at least you're thinking through this a little bit, 'cause, again, all we see is a five-minute conversation.
Right.
To know that there's more behind what we see.
Yeah, we've been talking about this for, for the last three weeks, Dave and I have had this conversation, 'cause we're trying to figure out, you know, some things, you know, as far as this specifically, we, you know, when this came up, we looked into this quite a bit, so.
But in two thousand six and two thousand seven, that was the reason we purchased the property on Route forty-four, that thirty-five acres. The whole idea was to put a consolidated county together, that was the plan, and there was a lot of work done on that. We purchased that property for about seven hundred and thirty thousand, which was a property that was, had been paid for by other developers, they paid over a million dollars for it. So we had that property, that was the plan, but then in two thousand seven and eight, when the economy tanked, we knew that we wouldn't have, I mean, to build, put a building together, we had kind of preliminary plans of it somewhere around twenty-four million dollars, and we didn't have that kind of money to pursue it, so that kind of stayed there, but there was a lot of work done on that at that time. And I think had that come to fruition, I think we would have eliminated a lot of the kinds of problems we have with these buildings here. It's been a nightmare to keep them up.
Thanks.
All right, if we can read number fourteen.
The Maintenance Department is requesting the Board approve and execute a service contract agreement with Juggernaut Mechanical Company Incorporated for the installation of a ten-ton split system to serve the county data room for the year two thousand fourteen, in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Mr. Speedy?
Aye.
Mr. Rear?
Aye.
Mr. Spiller?
Aye, motion is approved, and thank you.
Good luck, hope that works.
Take care.
Works for temporary.
So now we've got the Department of Water Resources.
Good morning.
Heidi, morning, Doug, how are you? Break-up, Terry?
All right, first item here is to confirm the union contract in the post internally for a week there, for ten days, for an operator three. Currently, we have a electrician, we've been training another electrician, like Seaver, and he has a class three operator license, and they've been utilizing him to operate treatment plants, and then this way, if he has that title, he'll be able to officially, we can submit it to EPA as an licensed operator we can use, so it'd be a dual purpose, electrician and a class three operator, and then this way, it helps us, we don't have to pull Dave Osborne away, and we don't have to pull our mechanic away, we can actually utilize him as pressure services too.
Yeah, I forgot that, 'cause he came from Solon with that, right?
Right, yeah, so that would be the bar.
Very nice, okay. Very nice, okay. Could we read number fifteen?
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board grant permission to advertise internally for the position of operator three, number two-three-one-two, for a period of ten days in accordance with the union contract.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner speeding?
Aye.
Commissioner rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller?
Aye, motion is approved.
All right, next one here is that CT Consultants currently have an engineering contract with them for some basic work, and we want to increase it to by forty-seven thousand dollars. This would be for our McFarland improvements for our membrane, and so the membranes are over ten years old, and they're starting to fail a little, and it's part of the process. We knew that we had to sort of place in them, but there's so much new technology out there that we, it's possible that we're gonna get a better thing for a buck. So, we're gonna be actually posting a request for information, first of all, to see which new membranes are possible to fit here, and then go out for bids for this. So, it's a very small amount for all of the engineering days that are due, because we have a lot of internal work that we're doing ourselves. So, it's requesting the forty-seven thousand for a screen, a new screen.
Did you have that in your plan, though? Didn't you have that in your, that, that overall plan that you brought us at the budget hearings?
That's right.
Things that you anticipated down the road that you would have to do. This is one of them.
Right, our initial thought was we would just be replacing the existing membrane plates in kind, but as we, as we started looking into it, we found that, you know, newer technology that actually could possibly have, for the same amount, for the same number of, of membranes, we actually get more treatment capacity out of it.
Oh, that's probably how, so things get better all the years.
So, it gained a little bit more room in the, in the, in the tanks as well as possible future expansion if ever needed.
But in any event, you had the con, the money, okay.
Okay, sixteen, if we can read that.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve an executive service contract maintenance warrant, number one, increasing the contract with CT Consultants Incorporated for additional spring evaluation and engineering assistance for MBR replacement at the Department of Water Service, thanks in the amount of forty-seven thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner speeding?
Aye.
Commissioner rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller?
Aye, motion is approved. Number seventeen?
Number seventeen is the dedication plat for the sewer line for the Russell Township Center Sewer Project. That being the intersection of eighty-seven and three oh six, the entire sewer line was, was placed outside of the public right-of-way to avoid any issues with ODOT being in the ODOT right-of-way. Some easements, some easement for the sewer line. Sewer is, is in, and the property owners have been sent notice that they can, they have time to connect now, and at this point.
So, that went off pretty much with not too many glitches at all?
No, it's very quiet.
We could read that, then?
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute the dedication of play of sanitary sewer line easement for Russell Township as it will serve as the easement for the main line sewer. I think the road, the road and Russell Township can further accept the sewer line.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner speeding?
Aye.
Commissioner rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller?
Aye, motion stands approved. And number eighteen?
All right, the next four items here are for the Thompson Sewer Project, the day that we may never ever show up here, because that could be closing. The project will be flooding the state here with some people here. We got our bond counsel from Squire Sanders, and we have from USDA, we have Christine here who we've been working with for many years on this. And since we only do this once every fifteen, twenty years, we're gonna let them sort of take over because there's a lot of paperwork that needs to be signed, and so I'm not sure which one you wanna go first.
Morning, how are you? We're here to actually do the long-awaited pre-closing for the Thompson Township Sewer. So, we're very pleased that we've gotten to this point, and we're going to pre-close the general obligation bond for one million eight hundred and seventeen thousand, and also the grant for one million four hundred and eighty-two thousand and one seventy-six. The good thing that's happened is that the interest rate has decreased since we obligated the loan, so it's now at two and a half percent.
Two and a half?
Excellent.
It is, for forty years. So, at this point in time, I think I'll turn it over to Wes Kearns from Squire Sanders. He has some paperwork for any of the commissioners to sign, and...
The signature and the litigation certificate, which is, I think, what eighteen is about.
Number eighteen.
Yes, and then the bond itself is number nineteen.
Yep, eighteen and nineteen.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute the signature and no litigation certificate in connection with the one million eight hundred and seventeen thousand sanitary sewer system improvement and refunding fund, series two thousand fourteen. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and execute the sanitary sewer system improvement and refunding fund, series two thousand fourteen, in the amount of one million eight hundred and seventeen thousand.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner speeding?
Aye.
Commissioner rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller?
Aye, both motions stand approved.
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll move on to number twenty, is regarding the loan resolution in connection with the Thompson Sanitary Service Collection and Treatment System?
This is just to allow me to sign it.
Okay.
The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and authorize Commissioner's clerk, Chris Blair, to execute the loan resolution in connection with the Thompson Township Sanitary Sewer Collection and Treatment System.
Some move?
Second.
Commissioner speeding?
Aye.
Commissioner rear?
Aye.
Aye, motion stands approved.
And then twenty-one is not on the agenda. This was added this morning. The Department of Water Resources is requesting the board approve and authorize the president of board to execute the USDA estimate of funds needed for in the amount of eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Sure, that is actually the amount that will pay off the Parkman revenue bond, and it will also place an extra payment on the Parkman general obligation bond. And Ms. Whelan had prepared three resolutions that I believe you passed last week authorizing that amount. That is just the form where Teresa Lysamp will actually order the funds, and it will arrive in the county's account on Thursday, May twenty-second, which is the actual closing date. And then I think someone from the Water Resources Department will provide the check to us on Wednesday and pay the one revenue bond off and the extra payment on the general obligation bond.
I'll make that motion? I think I should make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner speeding?
Aye.
Commissioner rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller?
Aye, motion stands approved. And I believe that that fulfills the obligations for Water Resources.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you for all your assistance also.
Long time to come. All right, now let's get going on it.
Okay, so this would actually be number twenty-two. The commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute resolution fourteen dash zero eight-eight prohibiting the submission of personal checks to the county treasurer other than official business. Dave, if you wanted to just give a little bit of feedback?
Yeah, this is formalizing, you know, desire of the board to not have people using the treasurer as their, as their ATM.
As a bank account.
As a bank account, so, you know, checking to make sure that there wasn't something already in place. It appeared it wasn't. It wasn't a widespread practice, but obviously, it's not something I don't think, I don't think the board would want to continue, so this just formalizes it.
Okay, so if we have a motion...
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner speeding?
Aye.
Commissioner rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller?
Aye, motion stands approved. Number twenty-two, we've got the request for cancellation of the twenty-second, two thousand fourteen meeting. Is that...
That would be this Thursday. That would be the June meeting. I have no cause for action.
So, we don't have any requests? We don't have anybody speaking, correct?
Nope, some moved.
Second.
Commissioner speeding?
Aye.
Commissioner rear?
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller?
Aye, motion stands approved.
For the June meeting, I'm trying to get Myron Takish as you requested, and I don't know, we'll try to get someone from federal.
Okay, that's awesome. Do, do you think, would it, would Grace possibly be able to, to, to be there for that?
She could, but I don't know, I mean, you wanna know what the state is doing with the money?
You know, just if we had a discussion, to have like a panel of people, if you had Grace Palucci there, if we had...
Myron.
Myron, right.
And I don't know who could get from feds. That's the one I'm, I'm trying to...
I think you have a representative of David Joyce's office, because I think that's...
Yeah, but I don't know if they know anything about, I mean, there's some, a lot of them are just...
Well, they have time to look.
I think we want someone who actually does, you know, the dealing with the money, and I'm sure there's someone in that office that, federally, but, you know, I will take care of that.
Yeah, that would be good, if that, if we could do that, that would be really, really well.
Okay.
The acknowledgements, we've got the weekly report filed by the dog warden, and that's of all the dogs seized and pondered, deemed or destroyed for the week ending May seventh, two thousand fourteen, is required by Ohio堤法的 code nine by five point one-two, and a monthly report filed by the Jugga County Sheriff's Office of an account of expenses for the inmate meals for the month ending April of two thousand and fourteen. And then, Mr. Klein, you had asked if you could speak on this, speak, you had something that, before we finish up with the meeting minutes?
Yes, hi, Jeff Klein, recently months. A month ago, and first of all, I want to thank Ralph Pilodary for bringing the attention of the obscene raises given to the Jugga Mental Health. And I appreciate that, so the parents, that being a parent of special needs, we want that money to go to kids, not to staff. Saying that, it's been a month. Has there been any plan, any action taken? What are we gonna do to eliminate, to see that this doesn't happen again? You know, and moving forward, these kind of raises, thirty-three percent for a CEO in one year, is obscene.
I think, I think one of the things that they did do was they, they rolled the salaries back to two thousand nine, but I think the thing that we as a board would need to do is look at board members because they're the ones that set those raises, and the board members, I think, they have the power, so I think that's something, I don't know what we can do there, Ralph. Have you, we haven't gotten any information back from...
Well, yeah, the prosecutor's looking into...
I mean, isn't he supposed to give us some information on that?
He's supposed to give us some indication on the law of what action the commissioners could take based on what's happened.
And I could appreciate that, but it's been a month, and either, either, in a month, I can't believe there's not been a phone call, communication from the commissioner, or from him or back.
Yeah, we've talked to the meeting, but they're waiting.
Either he doesn't care, or the commissioners, they're my one.
I think he cares. I, I think they wanna have all their t's crossed.
Well, you guys appoint, the law, you guys appoint those eight board members, and you can remove those eight board. I know that for a fact. I call the state attorney, and any one of you can call him and find out, state attorney, gentlemen.
Right.
If you have the, if you have the ARC C-section that will allow the board to do that today, please pass it on, because our prosecutor's not giving us that information.
I'll, I'll, I'll get it to you, and saying that, it, just, again, I'm a taxpayer, but also I'm a father of a special needs daughter.
Yeah, you told us that, isn't it?
And I, and I, we, I've talked to other parents, and we're now going to form, informally request a petition, and we're gonna start a petition to have the board members removed and CEO Jim Adams removed from his seat, and I wanna know if any of you commissioners are willing to sign this to support us.
I'm glad they signed it.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. Our problem is whether it's legal. That's the only problem we have.
Yeah, legal.
You can do it as a resident. I have to do it as a commissioner. There's a register.
Oh, no, no, signing this isn't an issue, whether we have the capacity legally to remove them, is the question.
I think we need to... My concern is, it's the board that hires Jim, not us.
Right.
It's the board, so the board, you know, that would be a board...
And I'm requesting that he, Jim resign, and the board members who approved his pay increases be removed as well resign.
Yeah, and I, and I, I appreciate you, you know, coming in this morning and, and bringing this up. I, I, this has been a real sore spot with me because I was grateful for the fact that the levy passed, because of the fact that we need, we need those services in this county, and they put a lot of, a lot of people at risk.
Right.
And I think that, I think that it was the right timing for the, for the commissioner's office to expose this.
I agree, and it, I, I, again, appreciate you, you exposed it because we wouldn't have known if that would have jeopardized the levy.
Right.
It would've been, you know, those are services needed by these kids and adults, not pay increases by someone who's already retired and rehired and getting a pension.
Right. And, and the, the big thing at the end of the day was, is I, you know, I, I basically have, you know, given a commitment and promise that I will continue my position of, of keeping the fight. It's just, unfortunately, we're in a situation where we have to follow based on what the prosecutor is directing us on.
He's telling us to do.
But I can tell you this, is, is that at the end of the day, you as the taxpayer, you as the resident, you as a father of a special needs children, child speaks volumes, and the, the, the amount of disgust and the amount of, of, of people that have just lost a lot of trust and confidence with the board of mental health, with the director of mental health, has really, you know, been, it's just been, been disgusting to the point that I think that it's, that they've gotta make a decision, and, and I, I, I'm glad that this action has been brought forward, that the residents of this county and taxpayers of this county are paying this levy, are finally standing up also to, to, to support our action and our, you know, drive to wanting this, this to happen, but they need to, they, they need to open their ears loud and clear that they need to go, and I appreciate that.
My only question is, you're saying board members who voted for the raise. Now, there may be other board members that were in favor of that, and they just happen not to be there at that time. So, and, and what do we do about the state board members?
To clarify that, when, when Commissioner rear and I weren't at that meeting, when we sat down and discussed this, Commissioner rear and I were both under the, the understanding that we weren't going to hold a board member accountable that did not vote for that, because in fairness to them, they, they did not have a voice in that, in that call. And, Mr. rear, am I correct on that as far as...
So, how many, but how many were state members versus how many were our members?
You're allowed to point eight. There's fourteen board members total.
No, actually, there's, isn't there twelve?
Yeah, there's only twelve seated.
There's only actually twelve seated.
You're allowed to have, you're allowed to have fourteen. There's twelve seated. Eight are allowed to be appointed by the county, six by state.
Okay, but we have six, and they have, we have six and they have, well, I'm saying, well, we have appointed.
No, we have seven and five.
We have seven and five, okay. Of those, of those who voted, how many were, I just wanted to know.
Oh, right. I, I don't know the actual...
I've seen, I've seen the piece of paper that, the minutes of, of that meeting, I don't have, I, it's not committed to member, but...
Well, something has to be done, I agree.
We're all in agreement on this, but we, like everybody else, have to follow the law, and, and sometimes that's, sometimes you don't agree with following the law.
No, no, I think we all agree to follow the law, but I think it's time for action on this case.
Yeah, we can't jeopardize...
This can put some pressure on them, but I would like to see, I would like that breakdown.
Sure, I'm sure it's in the minutes.
Yeah, it is. I, I saw it. I don't have it here.
You don't recall?
No, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel comfortable saying who or who didn't without...
And then, and then on the other hand, on the state ones, can we do something about that? Can we do some kind of resolution to the state with the same kind of concern?
Well, and those questions you're asking need to be addressed, and it's come to the point where now needs to be addressed, and there's a lot of parents upset about it, I tell you that.
I hear you.
The real issue is the criteria that we have, that, that people are...
Using.
Yeah, I mean, the state, even the state, even the ones we appoint, they say must have this background, or must have that qualification, or something else.
And some of them have to be actual inmates. I mean, they have to...
Yeah, all of, all of the ones that I've read, they, requires that these people on these boards have a background, to whatever degree, in mental health. There's nothing there that says, geez, it would be nice to have a CPA, it'd be nice to have somebody with business acumen that, that could come in, and everybody has to fill a little niche or a role that they just, they dictate to, to us, and so where we appoint them, we appoint them basically on the recommendation of, of someone who, who knows that, and I don't mean to, you know, must have had a mental illness, or must have be, have someone in their family with a mental, you know, those kind of criteria.
We'd probably need a better vetting process.
Well, I can, I can tell you, there's a lot of parents that would be more than willing to be on that board and partake in it.
But you have to have...
Well, I, I would think having a special needs child would give you more expertise than a lot of people.
And if we had a better vetting process so that when it comes to us to vote on them, that we could say, okay, you know, maybe we would talk to them, and now that we know that we, this was an issue, it never had been.
Right, well, and again, thanks again to Ralph for bringing it to our attention, and now, as parents and as...
No, I agree.
The other thing too is, is that, you know, part of the, part of the two, two things to add to this is, I, I was very, very disheartened by the fact that the position that the, the board currently took of just basically, you know, the bank robber was caught with, with, with the money.
Right.
Now they just basically take it back and have this go away, so in, in the position that, you know, is that the responsible position for them to have taken and just basically completely disregard the will of, of what the voters wanted, the will of the, the whole principle of this? It wasn't, it wasn't good. But the, the second thing is, is that it just kind of opened my eyes also as saying that, you know, the recommendations that we did get for a lot of this came from the director himself. the recommendations that we did get for a lot of this came from the director himself.
Right.
So it's almost like, you know, the head is, or the voters watching the head.
Exactly.
Well, a suggestion, a suggestion I would have for, you know, to take this a step farther, is to have ready a group of people that are willing to step up.
Oh, we've got a group of people.
So if the pressure is out there to remove that board, it's not, you wanna blow it up and leave it, no. Here's Plan B. These are people that have a similar passion, but they also have a sense of...
I'm just surprised they didn't look at the nine hundred and ten employees that we have, you know, in order of who gets paid what. I mean, one only has to look at that, and you know, right out of the box, you know, you're a hundred fifty-three, a hundred seventy-five, you're at the top of the heap, and you're not even close to the next guy.
Well, again, a thirty-three percent raise in one year and then ask for another fifteen.
Forty-five?
Yeah, it was gonna be, that's just what I'm saying.
Crazy.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, if we can move right along here with the meetings, we've got, the commissioners will hold a regular session on the, or the, yeah, twentieth. The twenty-second has been canceled. The county offices will be closed during Memorial Day holiday.
Yeah.
The scheduled commissioners' meetings is canceled for the twenty-seventh. For the revision, nine AM at the auditor's office on the second of June. Commissioners will hold regular session on the third, and then the third will hold a public viewing at two PM for the proposed vacation of Sandstone Drive and the alteration of a portion of Y Road in Monson Township. Now, prior to that, are we gonna have a discussion here for a public meeting before the viewing or just the viewing?
The viewing will be at two o'clock.
That's at two o'clock, yeah.
We have session, regular session, then at two o'clock, you'll reconvene down there. By law, you have to go and meet there.
And then in between here, you'll get a report from the engineers' office following the viewing, and then the hearing is on the tenth.
Okay.
Are you gonna do the revision?
Um, I should be able to.
I mean, I...
I'll look, are we gonna see each other before, uh...
I don't think.
No.
Six, two.
Not officially.
I will not be here. I'm going to Washington. So I won't be here Thursday.
Just let me, let me know. Give me enough notice, let me know.
Okay, and then NACOC?
And then on the fourth, we have NACOC meeting at nine AM, WIB meeting at ten AM, four seventy, Center Street Building number eight.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So in the NACOC, the whip...
One more thing, please. Sunday evening...